Officially call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Let the ministry reflect that all of the board is here, as well as some members of the staff. And with that, we have the May 28 minutes before us and would entertain a motion of approval on those minutes. Move? Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the minutes will be approved as written and blessed by the board. Thank you, Lisa, as always. Monthly reports, we've got most of the monthly reports in, a couple areas that are missing, building, local history room, personnel, planning, and recreation. And I would expect those to be in by week's end. Public hearings tonight, we have a handful of guests, so we'll start with Mr. Cavalcanti and then we'll work down from there. So, Mr. Cavalcanti, the floor is yours.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. We're here tonight to request a re-subdivision of a parcel of land connected with In the Woods. This is Section 4. And has designed for a number of years that the Section 4, or was part of Section 2 at one point, but Section 4 always had four flag lots. Today, we're asking for to put in a fifth lot by redeveloping Lot 214 because it has almost nine tenths of an acre. And the lot is way too big for us to sell. And it probably shouldn't have been done to begin with, but I didn't, this was when it was done in 2007. This here's a half acre lot. These two lots in the front would be remaining exactly the same. And it would look like this. Five lots, which I will pass out to you also. This is where that section occurs, is where Jim Costello has brought the subdivision map. It's this area right here. It's what we call Section 4 now. It's across the street from the U-shaped section that was approved and is pretty much built out today. It just goes across, it's across the creek. Remind me of the creek. Which ties in the crossbow. So, what we're looking to do is add a fifth lot in here. As you see from the small drawing that I sent out, passed out to you, we have lots at 115 feet, a lot of 100, and a lot of 208 feet. We have, it's still off the same private drive that we had previously. All the utilities will be the same, except we would add the additional utilities to take care of the fifth lot that is now in the center. We have cantered the lots to make it more attractive in terms of, as you approach it. And of course, remember that pond is back here, the town pond, that was built a number of years ago. So, our request is to re-subdivide that portion, your Section 4, from four lots to sell to five lots.
So, Jeff, if you would just talk to us, it seems to me that, if I recall some of the early plans, it was kind of a meandering stream through here. And one of the things that we looked at, or PRC looked at, is we made some improvements to that area to straighten, to straighten that out. Is that...
Mr. Cavalcanti's putting application to DEC now to try to take away the crazy bends. We're concerned about erosion and the proximity to the house.
Section 4 right now.
So, that's part of, the reason for the request is because of the effort.
So, that effort, that effort is going through regardless?
Yes.
Whether it's the existing four or the proposed five, to get that straightened out, to get that, get some of those bends out where we know we have problems historically.
Correct.
Okay.
My only question, Jeff, is, is this going in any way make a negative impact to surrounding lots, neighbors, drainage, anything along those lines?
The church is over here.
Right.
And then this, there's a nice stand of trees in here that separate the pond, so it really doesn't impact, that additional lot really doesn't impact any of the appearance or the neighbors, with, you know, exception of this house. He's, he still may have a house behind him, but...
Right.
Just one more. It's really kind of an isolated location.
Okay.
And there's sufficient utility service in there to service that extra house.
Questions? Comments?
Sounds okay to me.
So, before you say that, I've always got to throw the water on the project.
Well, let's hear it.
And I, and he's absolutely right. I have really no conceptual concern for them doing it. But, the only thing that we have to deal with is the fact that when you went through a secret process twice, you dealt with 56 lots, and now you're going to have a 57th lot. And I'm questioning if anybody's going to have a concern for the secret process being disrupted through adding additional lots.
Well, I mean, I think that if, if we were to move forward, Jim, I mean, from my perspective, you'd have to go back through another public hearing.
Agreed.
To me, that's table stakes, that, that you have to do, because that is a change. And then I think you'd have to take a look at, you know, the seeker and the secret findings that, that came out.
Yep.
And if there, if there needed to be some modifications or upgrades, certainly that that, that would be something that we would have to do, you know, as part of the seeker process and part of them, part of the proposed modification.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. And the other comment I have is the fact that it was an incentive zoning program. Granted, we got, you know, we got a lot of stuff out of this because of the pond area and, you know, some other things. I think you just generally, among yourselves, have to agree that you're satisfied with what you received for the incentive for 56 lots. And if the 57th lot isn't that much of a deal to you, then you can live with what you've got. Or if you think you need another incentive to accommodate the 57th lot. Maybe the straightening of the creek, although he was going to do it anyways, but I was a little concerned that there might, there was going to be a topsy-turvy situation in terms of the amount of improvements he had to put into the space between the creek and the roadway, because he's got to extend that roadway back into Crown Point. There was an awful lot of infrastructure had to be played with to get four houses in. And to be perfectly honest, we were concerned that that phase might never be built because of that region.
This, this face here, you mean?
Yeah. With those four units. So, I mean, if you're comfortable enough saying, hey, we got what we wanted, we got enough out of it, now we can be assured that the lots will, or the creek will be straightened out the way we want it to be done. The roadway will be installed the way we want it to be installed to tie in Crown Point, if you're happy with that.
Those can be conditions.
Those are findings that we can make. If you think that there's something else you might need, you should think about that as well.
Yeah, and I concur with Tony with respect to the need for a public hearing. So, we're talking just conceptually right now as to whether we're, but we're not making a decision before a public hearing is held.
Correct.
Now, we move ahead and schedule one.
I don't have a problem with that.
Eddie?
Fine.
Okay. So, the next step would be, you know, making an application. That would come before the town board, because the board is the one that has the jurisdiction for this. And we'll get that, get that on the docket, to account for advertisements and all those things. So, okay. You'll leave a copy with Mr. Benway, that larger one with Mr. Benway?
Yep.
And then also the one with the, the five lot as well?
Yes.
And you'll work with, and you'll work with Mr. Costello to get, to get the paperwork.
He sounds rather expensive, though. Mr. Costello.
No, not at all. I just, I just want to make sure the board's fully comfortable with where they're going with it.
Mr. Costello is priceless, as we always, as we often, as we often say, so...
He'll love me more when I'm gone.
Kind of antique.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Our, our next guest tonight is, is Mark Crane. I think everyone knows, knows Mark. And Mark, Mark has been spending some time with, with Mr. Costello and then the Historic Preservation Board. So, the two people in the room that probably have the most information on this is both Mr. Costello and Councilwoman Metzler. So, with that, Jim and Mark, I'll let, I'll let you kick off.
I have to add Jeff Benway, because Jeff Benway has been intimately involved with this family over the last several months. Mark came to me several months ago, actually talked to the board, I think early on, about the idea of possibly doing something like this. The board said they would be, they'd be interested in listening to this. They went to the Historic Preservation Board. And I'm, Mark, I'm going to let you talk to the board about your process and what you're trying to do here.
Okay.
A full disclosure, and then we can talk about that afterwards.
Okay.
I also have Scott Arger here. He's doing my engineering for me. Made that for us, so we have a, like, oversight. I'm here tonight because I'd like to redo the Mark's Pizzeria on the Four Corners down there in Penfield. I started the process with Jim to try to figure out what was the best way to historically make the new building fit in with the old building. So, I had an initial meeting with Historic Preservation, and that, that went okay. I left that meeting with a lot of homework. And, you know, spent a couple weeks, you know, driving around and taking their recommendations and their ideas and, and coming up with what I felt like, when I left that meeting, that they were pretty comfortable with. There was one little thing they asked me to change on the drawings. And I changed that for them, and I think they were pretty happy, well, with the drawings. So, you know, over the years, when me and my brother bought these buildings, you know, we've been putting a lot of money into the buildings over the years, and they're, they're old. And the last remodel we did, when we redid the pizza shop, you know, because that's a house, and it, and we have a commercial pizzeria in there, and we're really busting out of the seams, we're kind of growing out of our spot. So, you know, we're to the point now where we really like to, we really love the Four Corners, we like being close to the school, the sidewalks, just that whole area. So, you know, I'm here tonight to try to figure out, to see if I can, if it appeals to you guys, my idea is to put a new building up there. That's kind of where I'm at. I also made, I made some allowances for, there was a historic girl there that ran a printing press years ago, and I told them that I would memorialize her in the building somehow, and I was going to put some cornerstone up for her, or eight cornerstone with a story and, you know, to try to, so that, because I, that was important to one of the Historic Preservation Board members. But beside that, you know, I'm, I can start to show you some of the pictures, or if you have questions, you know.
I think, why don't you, why don't you just roll out what you have, Mark?
Okay.
And everyone, everyone at least has had an opportunity to see some of the plans that were submitted, Jim, share that with us. So, why don't you, if you and Scott want to go through and just talk about it in a little broader detail.
And while you're doing that, Mark, I'll, I'll kind of snapshot where the Historic Preservation Board went and commend you for the homework you did do.
Okay, thank you.
Between these, initially, Mark came in with sort of a prototype from your Palmyra location, a brick structure that was beautiful, that was certainly historical in looks, but as was discussed for the Historic Preservation Board, not necessarily historically accurate or blending in for our Four Corners district. So, the conversation switched or turned from that brick structure to more of something keeping in line with, like, Incognito, and we mentioned a couple other businesses in the area as far as colors, style, architecture. So, the brick concept was trash, so to speak. And I think you were okay with that.
Yes.
Especially from a, from a cost perspective.
Yes.
As to what you're able to do with the building. So, Mark did listen very intently to the Historic Preservation Board. Kathy Canower and I had kind of teamed on the Little Nellie concept, as far as some way to memorialize or recognize her in that area, to kind of add to the walking historical nature of the Four Corners, to give some information for people as they go through. And also to, within the, inside the building, we gave Mark a suggestion for down the road, as the folks from the Humphrey House did, to revisit with Kathy Canower to get some historical pictures and the like for inside the building. But as far as the, the concept of the, the new structure, it, it did go through a little bit of the journey with Historic Preservation Board, who I will say, for the record, was, was fine, had a consensus of fine of taking down the, the building next to the pizza shop, given the disrepair, given the amount of work and expense it would take to, to get that up to, up to grade with what you're looking to do. So, they were, they were fine with that. I think one of the larger concerns that we can discuss later, you can mention later, is the north, north wall, was it?
Yeah. And I did make some changes on that.
Yeah.
Well, thanks. So, right now, this is the, the Mark's Pizzeria building that we remodeled, that's what it looks like. Took a little snapshot of it. Try to give you, you know, what we have and what we're thinking about doing. And then, so then this one here is where the doggy salon was. So, they kind of sit, they kind of sit like this, as you know. And then churches across the street. So, that's kind of what we have. Then, if you, if you want, if you look at the, the park side of the building, this would be the, I don't feel you have one.
Oh, you guys have some, these are all right?
And this is the park side of the building, where the park is. So, if you're driving down 441, then you would see, you would, you would see this. So, that would be the 441 side, looking through the park.
Your south side.
This here would be the north side.
Before you leave that side, let's talk about each side in their individual state.
Okay.
And you'll notice there are two windows on that side of the building, and there are not four. The board talked about that, Paul was with us. The intent is to embellish that portion of the property with landscaping. Because, and we should talk about this in more detail as well, because you're going to have to make some decisions. One of his proposals is to bump out an outdoor dining area into a portion of the park, without people to utilize the park. We talked about various things to do in terms of offsetting, you know, town costs, and we talked about cleaning up the park, adding to the park, maintaining portions of the park with refuse and all that stuff. So, that is why you only see two, two windows in that area. That would be the outdoor dining area together.
So, is the, is the kitchen then back here? Is there an option?
The kitchen, there's the, here's the layout here I brought for you. So, if you look at it, if you look at the right side there, that's the park.
Yep.
So, the seating area is there, and then the kitchen rolls behind it.
In the back, yeah.
That's why there's no windows in the very back.
Right.
So, the, you, you'll walk through, and then you can get out to that park area right there. And then I have, I have, if you look here at this, it's got a pretty nice job of going this up. If you look right here, this is the pizza shop. So, here's the dining area here, here's the kitchen, so the door. So, then what I would be willing to do is, this area here, I'd like to use, utilize this, then tie all this brick together here. This would, this path, this is a sidewalk right here, then I would take this path and the bricks that we took out, we would make this path come around and tie in, so this all ties in back here with the sidewalk. So, this all comes together. And then, it's kind of like a little, the, the park actually goes to somewhere now.
And talk a little bit about the, the removal of the, of the garage and what you're going to be doing with that area?
Yeah.
While talking about that side.
So, then, then, you know, these all come down, so then this area here becomes green space here, where, you know, because that building won't be there. So, this will be green here, this, all this is green in here now. And then it rolls around in here, too, because this, this building's not here, too.
So, you're adding green space to, to the area?
Yeah.
But you have no room to put your outdoor dining in the green space that you speak of?
No.
As opposed to our park?
Well, I, I just felt like the park is so beautiful and a perk. The door, the way I have the layout, it'd be a nice way to utilize the park, people could actually come and go to the park. I mean, right now, the park really doesn't get used. So, I said, you know, I, when I talked to Jim, I said, I said, holy cow, I said, what if we switched it around and we had this over here? Because we're only taking, we're not really even taking it, this, it, we're, I guess we are taking it, we're borrowing it, we're using it. But I think people will come, and they would use it, then they monkey around in here, and I think the park would get used.
And I recall, as we flushed it out at Historic Preservation Board, it would be more of the concept of like a partnership with the town, so that it's, you know, not necessarily that you're, you're borrowing the space, so to speak, but you're, you're, it's like a...
I was going to take responsibility for it.
Right. But that if, you know, if somebody gets frozen yogurt and needs one to sit down...
Yeah, yeah.
It's not just a Mark's Pizzeria.
Yeah, there's an ice, there's an ice, there's a, as you guys know, there's a, there's an ice cream parlor right here now.
Right.
And there's also, you know, the two coffee shops back there. And so, I think what's, what's happening, it's what's happening in this area right now is, is that especially in the summertime, more and more people are going. So, there's really nowhere to go back here either. So, I, I don't know. I think if they're getting ice cream, they may want to walk up to the park. That's why.
So, I'm unclear, it's a business, you have, you can use some indoor seating now, right? So, if you have a wait person who, you know, somebody comes in, I want to sit outside. And you say you can go sit outside, but you can't because there's these people with their ice cream cones or their coffee from some other place. I mean...
I don't care about that.
You don't care about that? It's not...
Well, because we have plenty of seating and, and the other thing about the outdoor seating is, it's like, it's like when we were in Perrington Square Mall, like, a lot of the people would come to the pizza shop, but then they would go eat at Bill Gray's. And, or the people from Bill Gray's would come over to the pizza shop.
It's like a courtyard, it's like the courtyard in the mall, you're thinking, is open for...
Yeah. And as long as the customers are coming, you know, you want them to be happy. And, and what I think will also happen is, is they may not necessarily come like this, and they go right in here to sit. They're going to come in here, and I told, I asked Jim, I said, I'd be willing to donate to the town some, some additional, those nice metal benches, some additional garbage cans, like I bought when I did the pizza shop. I mean, I'm talking more like, you know, making the park a little more functional, instead of just driving by and looking at the park. I mean, I can envision people in the summertime coming from that yogurt place, or the coffee place, just coming over, because now they'll have a place to sit. Plus, if people are coming to the pizza shop and they're waiting for the pizza, instead of waiting and sitting in here, they're going to go walk, walk out to the park. It's, I mean, that's, that's what I'm envisioning.
Gotcha.
Does the, the northern wall of the building sort of go up to the north end of that property?
The northern end of the wall?
Yeah. Is the building going to fill that whole space, or will there still be a road out to...
This here, you found out, this north wall?
You should, you, Mark, you should, that's a very good question. You should, you should explain to the board your, your procedures to what you're going to do in terms of tearing down one building, building a new, sequence of development.
So, what, it would be a two-phase project, because the pizza shop, we can't close, because there's, there's too many customers, and we, there's, we can't service them from the other places. So, this building would stay up. This summer, if we're allowed to do this, this, these three buildings right here would be come down. We put the foundations on, we get it, we get it put up. Hopefully, we have it done by first of November, or whenever we get it done. Hopefully, before we get nine months of snow again.
Peace.
Then, then, once that's all done, I mean, if we get it done early enough, and, and the paving plants are still open, I would do Phase 2 if the paving plants are open. If they're not, say, around Christmas time, or whenever we get it done, then this one would come down, and then we would stone it. If we couldn't pave it, we'd have to stone it in the spring. But, you know, the, it would be Phase 1, Phase 2.
So, what's happening in the old Mark, the Mark's that's existing right now? When you tear that down, if the other one's being built?
It'll be done.
It, it'll, no, it becomes a parking lot.
This is the parking lot.
Okay.
And I can, I, if you look at this right here, what, this is the old Mark's building, these red lines here, that's the parking, right there.
And the house behind it, too.
This is, and this here, yeah, this is gone here, too.
It's all parking and new green space here.
And there would be access, then, to 5 Mile directly from that parking lot?
Well, right now, there's access, there's, our driveway is right here.
Right.
So, it's, it's a two-way driveway, it's like a suicide driveway.
Right.
What we propose to do is, we've got permission from the DOT to put a two-way in, but I'd rather have a one-way. So, I would just want to have one way in. So, you won't be able to come out, but you'll be able to come in.
How do you get out?
There's...
Going out through the access room?
There's, there's a, that little side street over there, you can go out by the Dunkin' Donuts.
The CNB, that access room.
Yeah. There's a couple, there's a two, three ways to get out going this way. Because my main, my main concern is, if, if someone's at, say, say Webster Thomas or Webster Short or Grease is visiting Penfield High School, all those parents are coming down to visit, to have the athletic, whatever they're doing, or maybe it's a concert, well, when they're driving down the road, if they can't turn in, they might just drive by and then they might go somewhere else. But if they can turn in, but then once they're in, they can figure out how to get out, it's time looking at them. I just, I think it, it would make the site a little bit more open, a little bit more safe, a little safer.
Now, there is, there is a little bit of a problem that we've been wrestling on, and that's why Justin's been good enough to get involved in this over the last several weeks. DOT, when they started reviewing this, determined that there was a concern...
County or state, Gus?
County, it's all county.
Okay.
Determined that there was going to be a concern, because if somebody was coming northward to turn into Mark's new driveway, and they couldn't, you couldn't bypass to get around him, people were going to start stacking up back to the intersection. But when you get to the intersection, that becomes a state highway. So, of course, the county DOT ran off to the state, said, this is our concern, and the state said, well, that's a good concern, you're right. So, what the DOT, the county DOT is now telling us is, we would allow this to happen, as he's proposing it, but we now want you to lose a couple of parking spaces on the east side of 5 Mile line road to use as a bypass, so that if anybody gets caught behind, somebody waiting in line to turn left, you can make that move around them and then head north and keep the intersection free.
Got it.
You know, and, you know, it's unfortunate, because we did a lot to get parking down there, but I think realistically, you know...
Safety is...
Your, your delivery guys are the ones that use those spaces.
I was going to say, those are pretty much Mark's, you know, as you have a customer or...
I, I, yeah, I personally, you know, I know my brother fought really hard for a spot, so that was the one thing about this project that I really don't like. And, you know, I had to kind of swallow my pride on that one a little bit, and I haven't really fought it. But, I mean, I, you know, he, I know he fought hard to do this here, so, I mean, but...
Where would the proposed entry point be to the parking lot?
Well, the entry point's right here now, it would be moved just a little bit to here, because they want, DOT wanted me to move it here.
They want it as far north as possible.
So, we're picking up a car and a half. I mean, everybody, as it, my, my thing with the DOT was, I understand what they mean, but it's already there. It's, it's been there forever, and people turn in there all the time, and there's never a problem. But I understand, this has happened to me before, when you make a change to the property, they want to upgrade it, so if you're, if you're in the position where it's time to do it, well, then it's time to upgrade. But if it stayed the way it was, there's still a left-hand turn. But I understand what they want us to do, and I'm, it's fine. But the answer, the question is, the entrance moves about 20 feet this way.
For the north.
So, it was, it is here, but now it's there, it's probably more like 40 feet, right?
And you envision that to be an entry only?
Only entry. I think, I think it's safer.
Across the street, you own the church and the parking lot there, would you, you know, educate people going in there to park?
Absolutely, we have to.
Yeah.
And that's the, that was the reason why my brother made me buy the church. So, yeah.
So, if a lot of people would slip parked across the street, they'll go, they'll fill more...
Well, we, we let people know that, you know, the signs are up for Mark's Pizzeria parking, that too. We, you know, we have 30, 30 or 35 spots over there, and that's where we tell, you know, the employees, plus we have the municipal lot down there, we utilize that. But we, it's beautiful having that there, because if it does get congested, the customers know, they can just go up there and walk right down.
Do you have your employees park up there, or do they just...
The employees right now, if it's, if it's at the nighttime, because the bank's not open at night, we'll park at the bank, we'll park at the municipal, a lot of the, like, the all-day people that work all day, we utilize the municipal lot that you provided for us. So, most of our employees, I make them park down there, because, because as you guys know, the Four Corners, it's just a tight place for parking. So, we try to educate our people to...
Well, you probably have a lot of kids who aren't even driving there to work anyways.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of...
The weekend crew... Well, you probably have a lot of kids who aren't even driving there to work anyways, you know, you probably, the weekend crew, you look in there, there's like fifteen kids back there.
Yeah, a lot of the, especially the girls and the young men and the dough pounders, you know, they're sixteen, seventeen, so they get dropped off. Little pounders, right, Tom?
So a couple of the other things that Paul and I were involved with the Historic Preservation Board's effect before, didn't wanna see landscaping and he is providing that on the south side to kind of embellish what's happening and to the west. One of the things they looked at was the possibility of doing something on the north side.
Right here too.
Yes, and along that area, that's, that's probably not a big issue, that's something you can take care of. But we looked at the possibility of doing something along the building on the north side. It, it became problematic because he has to put a sidewalk in along that, along that building.
And the north side doesn't get any sun.
Right.
So anything that's there is gonna suffer anyway.
You know, we talked about putting some hanging baskets or something, it's just not conducive though to putting in a garden or something along that building.
What's the north look like?
What I did do on the north side though, Jim...
That's why he put in the windows to...
I put the fake, I put the, I put the fake windows in on the north side to give it a little more character.
One of the things he's also looking at is the possibility to break it up so it's, it's not so plain. He was looking to put a sign on the north side of the building as well as you're coming down Five Mile Line Road with the goosenecks. And I, and I think the board was supportive of it only because they were concerned that it was just gonna be a big blank wall if something wasn't put there.
Um, when you say fake windows, meaning when, when you're driving...
You're just gonna see this.
Yeah, but are you gonna see like, is it gonna look like a regular window so that...
It's fiber cement board. It's gonna look like, if you were to drive by the, that building that was built at Casa Larga, the second one.
What's an awning or something, something could make it look dressier, might look more attractive than, I don't know. Or goose-like lamp things or something.
I, I think he's open to just about anything. The board, the board was just in a quandary as to what, what it could be, what it could be a...
I think, I, I mean, it, it didn't, it didn't look horrible. If I, if I took the cement board out and I left it solid brick and I put the, the arches over it and maybe the, you know, the brick coming down the side stepped it out and put the, the sandstone on the bottom, it might, it might be enough just to have the detail.
It might be better.
I, I, my first thing was, I had it all brick and I had it detailed out with the more brick. The historic, the historic wanted it a little bit different.
I think, I think they were looking to break up the wall, is what they were doing. And I'm not so certain that, I mean, if you came up with something different, they'd probably support that too. I think the key was, you gotta break up the wall somehow and not have just this flat surface there.
What about some, um, sort of historical pillars, like that are flush to the, instead of the fake windows, kind of flush cement pillars, you know, three or four?
I could add... I last or maybe something like that?
Are you saying, well, 'cause that was the other idea that we were talking about, is we could add, we could add two more of these. Take these out and we could add two more pillars.
Because that just vertically would break it up.
Right.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that. I mean, I, I'm, I really just, my goal at the historic meeting was just to try to get a feel, because, I mean, I can do it just about any way that they wanted to do it.
Yeah, that'd be a sentence we're not...
I could redraw it up with five or, what do you think, four or five? There's already four there, if I added two more, there'd be six.
Yeah, I was thinking something more vertical, you know, symmetrical and vertical throughout there. Um, and Cuz, the, the sign would be an additional sign.
That's correct. He's looking at...
Sign at the front.
The elevations.
Sign on the side as well. Here's the other, I think I have, I have the...
So he's actually looking at three signs right now, we've got the same situation on the south side.
I lost my front.
Which one?
I lost my front. I know, I heard it, it's up there. The front, oh, there it is, there it is, there's one of the fronts. So that, that would be the front elevation there. The other one is, there it is. Yeah, so then, so that was the other elevation that you guys were looking for. That's the front elevation. And what I did is, we had the, we had the, we took all the buildings out and then we stood behind the building and took a picture. So that's pretty close to what, what it looks like behind the building now.
So that building is gonna basically take up the same area as the building that's being torn down first, the dog grooming business, uh, building?
Yes. Yes. That, that building is a, that building there is a little bit bigger, because the, the, the dog grooming building was, I think, forty-five feet.
It looks a little out of scale just because of the way the photograph is, but you get a feel for it.
It's pretty close to the same size, I think it's three or four feet bigger.
What's the elevation, how tall is the building? Is it, is it shorter than the current house?
Yes, twenty-five feet, nine inches. It's pretty much drawn to scale right there.
But there isn't a second story for this new one.
No, no. And what I did too is, I spent a lot of time with the architects to, if you look at, if you look at, uh, if you flip this over, I'm gonna hold this up and show you what I tried to do here, because I know it was very important to you guys not to see any roof fence, air conditioners. So what I did is, I spent a lot of time with the architect to make him hide everything. So on this elevation here, you can see, this, 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 see this dotted line right here? That is, that's the, this is, that's the roof line coming down, it's just a small pitch, it's almost like a flat roof, comes to the gutter drop. So you don't see any of the, you don't see any gutter. The air conditioners are hidden, hidden right behind all this and all the exhaust fans. And then if you look at it from the front, you see absolutely nothing too. So we lowered the roof way down and made this as high as we could to try to hide everything. Because like, if you drive by now, you know, you see the fans and stuff, because it's, it was impossible to hide them. So, you know, the historic preservation, historic preservation was really concerned about seeing anything, so...
Where's your enclosed dumpsters gonna go?
Enclosed dumpsters are already there in the enclosure, they're already...
You don't need a new one because of...
No, they, that's...
It's all good.
That's one we got, that's one we don't have to do nothing with.
Yeah, it doesn't have to get moved or anything.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you guys have any questions about this?
No. So how, how many, um, what's the seating capacity gonna be for those?
The ins, the ins, the inside has, seating capacity is sixty?
Sixty.
Sixty seats is what could possibly be there.
Are they booths, tables?
Tables. We might put, I think we're gonna put three or four booths and the rest tables, so then people can move the tables around if, you know, like a soccer team comes or a family of six, or if there's a family of two, I mean, we kinda like to do it so they can move them around any way they want.
You get buffet in there?
No.
Salad bar and that kind of thing, no?
No, it's, it's more, you know, the pizzerias don't do a big dinnertime business, it's more of a, it's more of a...
Impulse.
Pizzeria, yeah, it's an impulse. It's not like, you know, people say, oh, we're gonna go to the, it's not like a Pizza Hut was years ago, it's more like...
That's how I started visioning it.
It's more like people are driving from the high school, like, and the kid's like, I wanna slices. So then the mom and two kids will come in or, it's more, it's more during the day lunch, a lot of construction workers come in, they'll grab a slice, they'll sit down. I mean, we, we don't really, you know, what, what we have most of the tables for is, what we like to do is, we like to push the birthday parties for the kids. So like, we'll, we'll try to say, look, bring the kids down, and then you'll need, you know, put seven, six or seven tables together so you can get the twenty kids around the table. So people just, I, I think for lunch, you know, we'll have the wifi in there, so, you know, you'll get people, like, when they go to Starbucks, they'll come in and they'll sit down and maybe they'll just play on the computer and have a water or have a business meeting or something with two people.
Is it broken up so that you could have a, a party like over to the side?
No, it's, it's not broken up at all. What, what we like to do is just keep an open family-style space and, you know, everybody's kinda, you know, just hanging out together.
So where's the Little Nellie tribute go on the far side of the...
The Little Nellie thing, well, my, I'm gonna put on the, right here, on this, on this one here, coming this way.
On the north side?
On the, on the north side, I, I have one for my brother in memory of my brother.
Okay.
That's the north side there, you see it on the bottom of the pillar?
Okay.
And then on the south side...
By the, by the park.
By, by the park, I can't, here it is, yeah, I, I have, yeah, so on the park, so I did this for a reason. So everybody in the park, so see the Little Nellie thing? And then right on this post right here, I talked, what's that one of the times?
Kathy.
I talked, I talked to Kathy and me and Kathy are gonna get a big hunk of wood out of the building, we're gonna save, we were gonna save a hunk of wood. And then we were gonna have like a bronze, the Little, the Little, the Little Nellie story and we were gonna put that on the pole so people would know. So that, that's kinda where we were gonna memorialize it.
Sure.
I give Mark a lot of credit for the, the Little Nellie piece because you, without hesitation, like, whatever you wanna do and, and he, in fact, between, you're, you took it upon yourself between two meetings, he came back in the second meeting and said, I know who Little Nellie is. He's like, ask me anything.
He actually corrected the town, the town historian on her deathbed, that was interesting.
Well, you know, I gotta be honest with you, when I started reading about Little Nellie, she was, she was little, she was only, she was young and, and, uh, when she took it over, I mean, she was a very young entrepreneur, I mean, and she was a woman back in, you know, a long time ago, so...
Maybe you can name a pizza after her or something.
The Little Nut Block. I had to kinda figure out what she, I couldn't lie.
The kids menu. The kids menu, perfect.
I'm sure we could come up with something, I, I'll let you guys, I'll let the Historic Preservation come up with that.
You know, Mark, one thing I...
Yes, you menus?
Yeah, I've been following this because, you know, I'm with the local history room too and I just read a lot on historic preservation, I'm all about this stuff. One of the things, you know, in the park, we have the Daniel Penfield statue. And one thing we had wanted to do, because, you know, the bicentennial, chair the bicentennial, was have something there, um, a kiosk, something that would explain, like, you are here, because Daniel Penfield owned all that property, you know, we have a statue there, but there's no, we don't have anything that like explains it. We got little maps over at the local history room, but we don't have like a little, you know, some kind of destination thing. Now, I was thinking, if you were inclined, you know, using our park and everything, maybe that could be something that could, um, be built in that...
I, I do...
I mean, it'd be great to have somebody that would be willing to...
I think, I think it would be great to get people to come to the park, I mean, Kevin, does anybody ever go to that park?
Not, I don't see a ton of people, if there's someone's looking for some date, someplace to eat, because we don't have the seating now, we suggest...
The weather's nice, the weather's nice.
I would say that I would be willing to, to donate, because I think I have to donate, right, Jim? Is that how you have to say it?
We like that word, donate's a good word.
Well, I wanna hear what you're gonna do first.
I would, I had talked to Jim about donating some park benches, those nice metal park benches. You can engrave the benches any way you want, get some park benches, give people some different areas to go in there to sit. And then if, if, if we're gonna make all those meandering paths go to somewhere, well, let's make them go to this little kiosk you're talking about. We can have it made out of the same materials and then, you know, if, if we have to, you know, put, you wanna put literature in there is what you're saying? Or you just wanna have a story?
Just a story.
Yeah, a little story discussing the Kathy Canal, you know, something similar to, we are here, this is what... The Little Nellie story, snapshot.
Should we make it an historic park?
Because it is, I mean, it's, it's Daniel Penfield statue right there and...
On the magnitude, for Mark's Pizzeria, on the magnitude of this project, this would be, this would be the biggest project that Mark's Pizzeria has ever done. The biggest project I've ever taken on, I've taken on some big projects, but this would be the biggest one, knocking four buildings down, redoing the site, the mechanicals, the, I mean, it's a big job. So I mean, that little, the little thing you're asking for in the park, I mean, that, that just kinda brings it all together, it'll get the town behind the project. You know, the, the community, I think they'll really like, you know, if I tie the, if I get wayside in here and change all this, these paths around, but really make it come together. So it, what my envision is, is when I'm done, that the park looks like I didn't change it. It's like the park was there, except maybe the little seating area, it just, it kinda looks like it meshes in.
It makes it more inviting, I think.
I just, I guess what I'm saying is, I want it to look, I don't really wanna change it, I wanna make it blend in. And I think the bricks I take, I can use, and if we gotta match the brick, I'm sure we can, I think we can, I think we can blend it in. But I have no problem, I'm not sure where you'd wanna do it in there, but I think, I think it's a great idea. It'll give people a reason to go there and, and maybe there's other things we can do there. But I think we need, I think we need some more garbage cans, because the people are gonna go. I mean, we'll, we'll be responsible for the garbage, uh, we would need, I think, to make the park, you, so people utilize it, I think we'd have to, you know, brainstorm a little bit about maybe chairs or whatever, I'm not sure, I haven't really thought about that, because I didn't know how you guys thought about it, but I, I'm open to all those kinda suggestions.
Okay.
I brought you some materials in case anybody wanted to see, this...
In your bag?
I, yeah, I got, these are the old-style bricks. They kinda, this is, this is a brick that, you know, you would see back in the eighteen hundreds, it's a, it's a, it's not a...
It's a brand-new brick that's made for like...
It's not a perfect brick and they're all a little bit different color, you know?
Gives it some character.
So I mean, it's, it's, it's a brick that's gonna look not modern, because I don't, I know, I know modern's not good here. Then, I, I have, you know, we picked these col- this is a, this is an autumn tan, this is a fiber cement board.
Yeah, it's kinda the color pink.
So thi- this is, this is, uh, this is something that's good forever, this is something that doesn't rot, like wood. So I mean, I'm trying to build this thing, you know...
And these materials were shown at a Historic Preservation Board as well.
The, I'm trying to build this building out of materials that are here for the long haul, long after I'm gone. And then, you know, all, the only other thing I have is, these were the colors that I was thinking. This is an, this is an autumn tan and then this is the trim color. So if you look, you know, the autumn tan siding is in the middle and then the trim color is the light color. But it doesn't have to be like that, those are just my suggestions.
With all the space you're gonna have, are you thinking at all, would you envision partnering with anyone, like, you know how some places, they have, uh, I don't know, Baskin Robbins within a Dunkin' Donuts or...
No.
Anything like that?
Kevin's got enough to worry about.
Just stick with the Mark's Pizza.
Yeah, we just, we just, you know, we kinda, you know, we really are focused on our own customers and we just, it's, it's hard to just focus on our customers and make sure everything's going right, then we have to worry about somebody else and doing it right and it just...
Well, you made a nice comment though with the Historic Preservation Board, that question was asked. And the comment was, there's already a yogurt place in close proximity, I don't wanna approach upon their business.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't expect them to wanna approach on mine, so, I forgot about that.
I mean, working together, I mean, working together, that's key, you know, so you, you enhance one another, you know? And so someone can come down and, you know, can visit that area and have a slice and can have some yogurt and, you know, it's, it's, it's all within walking. You get a nice night, not quite like tonight, but you get a nice night.
You're, I mean, if this thing goes, you're really creating a destination point now, because there's really no reason to go there. You know, you're giving them a reason to go now, you're giving people, the ice cream lady is gonna be out of her mind if this happens, because, because she'll all of a sudden be like, because she's tucked back in that corner, now people will be out there eating ice cream, people are gonna be wondering where do you have to get an ice cream? And they're gonna go find her.
Yeah, sidewalks will leave.
It's like being in the village. And what, another thing that would be really cool is, on these meandering paths, and I don't know, maybe you don't wanna do this, but on these little meandering paths, maybe somewhere on the path or out here, there's a, maybe just a little sign that says yogurt out back.
The teeny that way, the Dunkin' Donuts and stuff.
But to help her out.
Very tastefully, very tastefully done.
Yeah. Now, you know, Scott's been sitting here very patiently, I don't know if anybody has any questions for Scott, but he's, he's done all the engineering.
I don't think I could really add much more. I mean, I, I work with a variety of clients, but I don't have very many that can present like Mark's recent, so I really, I really don't have much to add.
Could you show us the, uh, the west elevation of the building, the back elevation?
You know?
I, I can't see it.
What, you'd see from the parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I don't have that, um...
I'm assuming that deliveries will be through the rear of the building?
Everything's through the back.
Okay.
You don't think, no, I don't have that, Jim, I'm sorry.
I've seen it, I think you had it at the meeting, I don't, I don't, I don't have that with me.
But I can tell you, all that's in the back, if you look at the back, it's just solid.
You emailed it to us though, it was, it was emailed to us.
If you look at this right here, yeah, you can kinda, you can envision it here, because if you look at the back, there's just the one door right here. If you look at this right here, yeah, you can kinda, you can envision it here, because if you look at the back, there's just the one door right here. And it's the low roof, like I told you, so, you know, where's that? Yeah, you can't see it.
It, it's okay at this point in time, but we will want-
There's just the two walk-in coolers back there, the grease traps down below the ground, and then there's the one door.
For a lawyer entrance or something?
That, no, that's the delivery area, so, so all the trucks come in the back door.
We didn't even talk about the idea of tying his parking lot back into Bob's parking lot. Although, I think everybody's a little concerned that that becomes a cut through now. There's already a driveway on the other side, um, to put more people through there, especially with the parking and the deliveries, probably is not a proven thing to do at this point.
I would, I would, I would say you got sufficient cross-ex, es, easement, uh, to the, to the west of the, of Yotinis. Uh, so you got that drive-through, I think, to just put another, you know, cut through, through there. I, I think we'll have to just take a serious look at that.
Yeah.
So, okay. Board, other questions or comments for, for Mark at this point?
But, you know, I mean, the only thing I would say, Tony, is that, you know, I, I at least appreciate, I think the board appreciates, Mark's commitment to that outside dining area, I think that that's nice. I, I'm convinced that people around here, when it's nice, try to eat outside, because you only get two months to do it in a year. And certainly trying to complement the park with the outdoor dining, I think is a nice transition. And I agree, I agree with you, I think that people would go down there and, you know, whether it's a family with kids or, you know, adults or, I don't know, to people just going out, may even just, you know, say, "Let's go eat down in the park," and just go outside, wa- probably walk down some steps, right to the park or something, and you're right there. So, and if you've got wifi and they're capable, it's just gonna make it more conducive for someone to come in on lunch, or if, they have to wait a little bit, or, you know, they have their kids at the high school and they leave for a half hour, get something to eat, go there with their, you know, iPads or whatever it is. I think that that's gonna add a lot of activity down in that area. And then, your, your idea of the path, you know, kinda complementing Yotini back in there, you know, so you can get something to eat and you can get dessert. I just, I think it's really an exciting idea, and so, um, I think that's gonna be good for the Four Corners area, so.
I think, I think, I really think that, you know, people are looking, families are looking for a place to congregate. There's not a lot of places to congregate for kids, and our company's about moms and kids. So, I mean, what we always try to do now with all our new locations, Henrietta, Williamson, Palomar, we're trying to create a location where the moms come in with the kids, the kids get their free slushy, the kids are happy, the mom's talking to another mom. You know, it's, it's kind of an atmosphere now, Mark's is trying to just, we're trying to really target the families.
Right.
As much as we do the delivery, you know, we love it when the families come down, I mean, that's important to us now. And they, they don't come as much as we'd like, like I said, they don't come at night. But, you know, even when they do come and pick up, they may hang out for a few minutes or whatever, at least they got a place to go relax now.
Right.
But I, I like it, I, I think it's good.
So I, I think, based on your comments, uh, he's now able to go ahead and start making his applications for site plan approval.
Yes, certainly.
Just so the board knows, this, this is a type one action or secret, because it's in a historic district.
Right.
We will have to make findings and make a determination, uh, what have to be a response back from ship-o and all sorts of things, so. But we'll go through that.
Okay.
And is, is it, is it done at historic preservation board level? Have they signed off on it?
Oh, absolutely not, because you're, you're most probably gonna be the lead agency in the process.
Well, no, but they, they advise first and then it comes to us.
They're going to write a recommendation to you, based on all the things Paula and I have conveyed to you tonight. But their comment was, first of all, they're not legally able to do that until such time as you make a decision, Mr.-
Well, I know that, but I mean, as far as they're done enough that they can write a letter to us.
Yes, yes, yeah, they, they worked with him for two months to get to where they have to be, so.
Okay, good. Nothing else, Board, for Mark at this point? All right, Jim, Jeff, anything else from your end?
No.
All right, uh, so Mark, you'll continue to work with Jim and start taking those, start taking the next steps.
Okay. What do you want me to do, just call you tomorrow?
Yes, you'll have to start the application process, and I know you've been working on that already, so.
I have some paper versions of this, would you guys, like a couple of paper versions of the-
Jeff or Kaz?
Yeah, it would, yeah, it'd be good to have, yeah.
Thank you, your records. Can you open up these copies?
We, we have one set, but they've all been scanned, so. You want the big one back?
Okay. So we'll, uh, we'll give, we'll give Mark an opportunity to get his gear together, and then we'll invite Mr. Lindsey to come up and, and we'll start talking about the Yotini piece. And then Mark and Scott, I don't know if you wanna, if you wanna- I don't know if you guys wanna hang for another five or 10 minutes, just to see what, what Bob is talking about.
Yeah, I was glancing at his plant while I was sitting there, it looked awfully familiar.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Mark, thank, thank you very much.
We'll hang around a little bit.
How come, how come you let this guy out? I mean, he should be back at the shop, uh-
Is he a gel powder?
He called me, he says, "Mark."
Pushing stuff out?
He called me, he says, "Mark, I'd really like to come tonight." I said, "I'd love you to come."
Beautiful, beautiful, thanks, Kevin.
Kevin's been with me since he was very young, he actually worked with Jeff, you know. He's been the store manager of the store for how long, Kevin?
It's been a while now.
He actually owns the store with me and he does a fantastic job on it.
Yeah, yeah, great. Only way it could be any better is if my two daughters could figure out how to start a tab, so that every time I came in to pick up my pizza, I paid for theirs, so. All right, with that being said, with that being said, Kaz, you wanna take a couple of, a couple of minutes and just give a little kickoff?
I would like to, thank you, Tony. Mr. Bob Lindsey, and you know Bob, because you've given him two Jeff Crane awards over the last couple of years, which is nice. Um, he did finish up the, uh, Yotini building and then came back, uh, very recently to talk to me about the possibility of adding on to it. Uh, he's got a tenant in Mia Nails, Mia's, is up on the Edward Jones building, up in the upstairs. She would like to now relocate to a first floor. She and he contacted each other, and it came to be that she's willing to go in here if he's able to build this. And with that, I'll let you just start giving some, some information.
What I heard with Mark's, I think that's all great, um, a spot where everybody can go. I'd like to incorporate this with Mark's concept of the park, the gathering, and, uh, pizza and the yogurt. And even Jen over at the yogurt shop, she allows the kids get pizza and then hang out in the back. And sometimes they buy yogurt, sometimes they don't, but she allows it.
Gotcha.
And that's, and that's what neighbors for, that's a good neighbor. And what I'd like to see is somehow incorporating both areas as a destination spot. Um, I went to Jen, the yogurt, before I even committed to, um, the salon, and says, "Would this fit your, your concept?" Uh, we didn't do a tobacco shop, uh, graffiti, just tattoos, anything like that. We wanted to find something that was gonna fit mothers, kids, the kids next door go to the yogurt, the mothers get their salon done. I'd like to see maybe somehow connecting, maybe with a sidewalk over from Mark's Pizzeria over there, so it takes care of some of the foot traffic, so then the people from here can go to the park, go to the pizza, go to the salon, go to the yogurt. So, what we're trying to do is bring back the Four Corners of Penfield that was taken away with the four lanes. So, we have this big piece of property here, and we're trying to utilize the whole thing, create a new Four Corners, incorporate and bring in a destination space. What we're gonna do is, the actual barn, which is the Yotinas, uh, we're gonna drop the roof line, so the barn still has its footprint, the original footprint of the barn. It would more or less look like a carriage house, the siding would continue, the roof would continue, the, the windows and the doors are the same as what we put on the yogurt, which was all approved, and we won an award for it. So, I figured we'd just take the whole concept and make it a little bigger. Uh, it's a 1,200 square foot addition. On the plot map, what we do is, um, there's parking spaces there now, and if you count over a couple of parking spots, you can see where the building will land. We're not taking it all the way out to the property line, because I want more green space, I want more parking. I wanna buffer between the corner, I don't wanna encroach too, too much on the corner itself. So we kinda left a lot of space around it. Up in the front, we're gonna kinda rework the parking. We have four apartments residential in here, with, uh, pre-existing parking here, we're looking to open up parking, um, to create that. Right now, we have enough parking for Yotina, but we gotta add on for the hair salon. We're looking for a low-impact usage. We weren't looking for something that was gonna have a lot of traffic. We're talking about a hair salon, you're talking about two or three girls working, you're talking about maybe four or five customers coming and going. Something that's not gonna be a heavy traffic, heavy usage area, something that's gonna intermix with the whole surrounding. Plus, we got somebody that's been there 20 years, that has outgrown the space, has a need for ADA accessibility, she's been there 20 years, she's losing customers, older customers, they have to go somewhere else because they can't get up the stairs. So we wanna create a one-floor salon.
What's the square footage that she's using today, Bob?
The square footage of the addition?
The square footage that she has today, in her current, in her current operation?
Uh, she's, she's like about 900, 800 square feet, but it's all chopped up. A big open area.
I haven't been in there very often, so I-
It's, it's small, it's cluttered, it's, it's tight.
Straight.
It's nooks and crannies, it's an old house, second floor.
Right.
Lot of lost space, plus the stairs.
Well, is she expanding or just kinda giving herself some room?
Just more room, and the biggest thing is accessibility to her customers. She's got customers that she's had for 20 years that can't go there, they're, they're looking for other places.
It's a steep trajectory.
You know, when Mark does his thing, he's taking out a salon over there.
Yeah, that's true.
So, it's something needed, it's something that would utilize both buildings, low-impact, family-oriented.
Is it just hair and nails?
The mother can go and get her hair done, she can have the kids go sit on the deck next door, go get a slice of pizza, pizza comes back over to yogurt. I've seen it, I've gone over there many times during lunchtime, after school, kids are on the deck eating pizza, I look and I say, "There's a yogurt, there's a yogurt, there's pizza." So, user-friendly.
Yeah. If you, if you did that, is there any more room for anything else to expand upon? He said it's a big, it's a property.
You want, you want me to keep going? Okay. As, as I said, I've come back again. The library, which, okay, that's in the future. If you look, if you look at the parking lot, I left some room to where I could do a bump out, maybe expand. But what I would do is I would keep the pre-existing library there, not take it down, but add on to it and do like what I did with the barn.
Okay.
Make it something, not just the yellow school bus sitting in the corner.
And, and the intent would be to keep it residential?
I think that's what.
Residential?
Possibility. Maybe an office would be another, a, a small office, lawyer's office, somebody that's like a, a one or two type deal.
We don't need any more lawyers.
No more lawyers. Don't need a dentist, we don't need dentists. It could be a residential, but, you know, again, um-
No, but it could be office.
It could be something, but I'm not gonna take it down, I wanna utilize it, it was something that was preserved, it was something that was moved on the lot. I wanna take it, just like I did the barn, I didn't tear it down, I made it something. And that's what I wanna do with this whole piece of property. As I bought this thing way back, about four years ago, I said to Jim, "This is what I see." And what Mark's doing over there, that's what I see. And, you know, how we were involved with the Canada River National property, the park property, the access road, the property next door, you know, we're involved in the whole corner, we got a lot, lot of involvement there. So what he's looking to do, what I'm looking to do, we're gonna make something here, in my opinion. There's no other place in the Four Corners that you can do this.
Right.
Right?
You have some room, yeah.
So he's showing you a plot plan, he obviously, he's been meeting with Jeff and I now for a period of time. He will be getting an engineering design done and a site plan prepared. Jeff has looked at store owner management and all this other stuff, but-
The concept, it's a concept plan, something that, you know, we put together, we did a lot of thinking. When I was doing the, the yogurt and putting that building together, this is what I saw right there. It was just a phase one, phase two, phase three, thirteen.
Uh, what, what is the size of this property?
Uh, the acreage altogether?
Yeah.
It's just under two acres.
Bob, again, I'm sorry, at the very beginning, you talked about what you were thinking of as far as the look and the facade of the 1,200 square foot addition. Can you just repeat that again?
Same as the barn, just carry it across.
Okay.
Go to the barn, envision it, drop the roof line, the footprint follows the parallel lines.
Okay.
The roof line has the same pitch, uh, there's a two-foot difference between the two roof lines as it drops down here.
Just to break it up a little bit.
I wanted to break it up, because I just didn't want a big blob of a square building. Plus, I wanted to keep the, the integrity of the barn safely. This was the original barn, this is the addition, and, and make it together. The siding carried right across, the windows, everything that you see at the barn is gonna be, just follow right through.
Okay.
Any, any initial conversation with the historic preservation board yet on this, on this one, Kaz?
Uh, yeah, yeah, he's, he was in, talking, I don't know, last month?
What's that?
We were in the talk of them last month, the historic board? Yeah, we saw, they're, they're familiar with it, and, um, they have it, I mean, I think they like it, because they obviously approved the first one.
Right.
Uh, but they know that you have to look at this as well, too, they, they will be sending you a letter of support.
Okay. Board, thoughts?
I'm supportive of that.
Yeah.
And, and so if you were to move through the process, in a perfect world, why don't you start this, Bob?
Well, we would start as soon as we could, after the process, so, Jim knows.
Tomorrow morning.
You know, we'll go from this, get the drawings going.
So, so we could, we could be seeing, uh, demo, potential demo of Mark's and rebuilding, and rebuilding on your area and all that.
I'd like to have her move in by November, before the, before the winter hits. October, November is what I'd like to see.
That brings up a very interesting point, Tony, so what is the overall, because that, one of the questions I was gonna ask is, if Jeff or Jim can kinda put together a little bit of a schematic for us to combine the two projects, just to have an idea from Liberty Street down to Penfield Road?
We can do aerials for you if you'd like, but-
But the other question is, now, if all this is happening at the same time, how is that going to impact traffic flow within the existing bank out to Liberty Street?
It should not, it should not affect it, actually, because-
Ours, ours won't affect it, because we have accessibility in and out of Liberty Street, and we don't go back directly out to Five Mile.
There's a video, it's here.
Right, it'd be the same, yeah, as we did the barn, traffic flow.
I think the only impact would be at the point in time when they add on to the parking, they had to stone it and all that for a couple of days, it might be a little bit of an issue, but other than that.
But because of the two accesses, separate, Mark's Pizzeria coming in and out of Five Mile, plus coming around the backside of the bank, our access is Liberty. Um, the actual barn was how many feet off the side of the road and traffic flow? As you look at the, the actual here, we have a bigger buffer zone from the road to the actual construction site versus what we had on the barn. Barn, we were pinned five, six feet off the road, and we didn't have any, I don't, we didn't have any traffic issues. No accidents, no, nothing like that. But there's a good buffer, and that's, that's the reason why, I didn't wanna come all the way back out here, I wanted a buffer here, I wanted green space here. I just didn't want building, property line, parking line, I wanted green. You know, and you gotta admit, that hill came out beautiful. You come around that corner of that, that bank, you look there, that, that barn sits there on that hill, it's just so nice.
We had a lot of squash and everything.
Turned out very nice, yeah, no question.
Okay.
Hence why the award. Other questions?
And thank you for that, yes.
Other questions, Board? Kaz or Jeff, any, anything more here?
They'll just have to draw on his, his engineering work on.
Yep, and so, and so I think Rob makes a good point, uh, you know, looking, the, the thing we wanna do is, as, as Bob constructs and as Mark potentially constructs, uh, getting that tied together.
Yeah.
So the one sidewalk's over here and the other one's over here, and everybody says, "How come those didn't match up?" So we should just make sure that, you know, we're striving to, you know, to keep that, keep that walking flow.
Absolutely, we have a little community area over there.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Bob, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board, thank you.
Thanks for hearing our ideas and-
Thank you, Bob.
And stay-
Very exciting and-
It is, it is, the whole, the whole area is, is getting, you know, certainly a nice facelift. I'm gonna have you guys work on the, the northeast corner after you get this one settled. Okay. With that, we will move on to-
Jim, we'll call. Yep. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you. I don't see Bayside representative for Bayside Flooring, so I'm going to take some liberties with the agenda. I've got three gentlemen that are looking to stand tall at 6:00 AM sharp tomorrow morning, right at the end of the table, so I'm sensitive to that.
We're late if we're at 6:00.
What's that?
A quarter after 5:00.
A quarter after 5:00, yeah. Good point, good point. So a quarter after 5:00, yes. I should, right. Good point.
Your first cup of coffee kicks in, Rob.
So what I want to do is I'd like to hit the catch basin repair discussion if we could, so... All right, you've got the floor, Mr. Williams.
Yeah, we went out two weeks ago and seek bids for catch basin work, looking at a couple of different scenarios. One being in hourly rate to do one at a time. The other options were to do 10 catch basins in intervals, one with complete restoration, the other without complete restoration, to where we would actually perform the restoration after the catch basins were installed. We seek bids from six contractors. We got four back. Those four are represented on this matrix, starting with intervals of 10. The first column being 10 catch basins without restoration, and the second column being 10 catch basins with restoration. And the difference would be that when they finished, they would bring, on the non-restoration, they would bring the surface level of the basins to the top part of the pavement, and then we would come back in and do both the concrete gutters and asphalt. With the complete restoration, they would do the whole thing from start to finish. Escavate, install, and finish off the catch basins. As you can see, the numbers were quite impressive as you went further out with 30 catch basins versus 10, with AP Property Services basically supplying the winning bid based on 30 catch basins with restoration at $950 per catch basin compared to Ironwood at 2,035, Villager at $2,150, and CP Ward at close to $6,000.
Whatever.
Where's AP Property from?
They're located on 104 in Ontario, I believe.
Yep. Have you worked with them previously on any projects? Have they done work with the town before?
They've done catch basins. As a matter of fact, they're doing a job now. If you see their pink front-end loader on Empire Boulevard in front of the, I think it's Hardware Store or something, they're putting in the catch basin and drainage on that property. So they're pretty widely known in terms of their work capability and we've...
You may recognize the name because they were the low bid to provide residential snow plowing for the town.
So this is a budgeted item. We have set up each year to do 30-plus catch basins. We are currently kind of restricted with the amount of work that we currently have. So in order for us to make sure that we get these 30 actually completed, we're seeking approval to go out and contract the service. The catch basins that we've identified, roughly about 60-some that are in dire need of replacement today. Not tomorrow, but today. They've actually collapsed. We've put cones over the catch basins to, you know, keep people from falling into them or tripping into them. So the urgency of getting this work done is quite severe. So with the workload that we have in front of us as a group, it'll be late fall or possibly not at all, depending on the weather, if we'll be able to be able to do any of this work at all right now.
So Ronnie's got approximately $35,000 in the budget for 2014 for catch basins. 30 catch basins with restoration works out to be $28,500. So there is an opportunity as we potentially go through that if there is a couple of others that are so severe that present a major, major problem. But as Ronnie, Rick, and Bob will tell you, you know, with all the catch basins that we have in the town, I mean, you know, we're working on some catch basins, you know, that might be 30 or more years old and, or a lot more.
Or older.
Or a lot more. I was telling Ronnie actually earlier in the week that the catch basin right at our driveway, between our neighbors and our driveway, we've been in the house 36 years and it's the original catch basin. So I think some of the areas that you guys are looking at, now that I think about it, it's even...
Older than that.
Older than that, yeah.
Yeah.
So, and today, so what'll happen is, you know, again, regardless, you know, who is bidding here, but what would happen is they'll take out the old, they'll put in a pre-cast. So it won't be, in a lot of cases, we have some of these brick or block that they built them up, and then they got the joints, and you know, that's where you start to get your deterioration with the joints. With the pre-cast, you tie everything together, you know, it's going to last, you know, a lot longer than any of us around the table will need to worry about it, so...
And we're specing the materials. We got a quality assurance process in terms of inspecting the work, if it's being completed. There's a sign-off process for when the work is completed with the contractor. So it doesn't go unattended throughout the process. You know, we'll keep close tabs on how that work is performed.
So if you think about it, 90% of the catch basins, you know, cluster minus, that are put in, that were put into the town, were put in by contractors. So when a development comes in, you know, Benway and his team, they go through, they do the inspections. It'll be a similar type of process. We'll do the inspections, make sure they're doing them properly, everything is, you know, meets the specs. And then we have to do the sign-off before the folks are paid, or if it's a developer, before the money's released, so...
Right, right.
Questions, concerns?
Tony, just to follow up on what you said. So Ronnie, if I understand what Tony was saying correctly, that after a catch basin gets put in by the contractor, somebody from your team will inspect it to make sure it's done properly?
Yes, probably check a couple of times on them, actually, once they do the initial demo, and when they're ready to set the basin, and then...
Yeah, okay. Want to make sure everything, everything is tied back in.
So if there's an issue, it gets caught right away?
Absolutely. Before they cover it up.
Yeah, okay.
And we get a chance to inspect the pipe that's going into it to see if we have to sleeve it or anything like that at that time.
Okay.
Yeah, which Bob brings up a good point. This gives us an opportunity to go through and do some flushing at the same time that we're actually installing the catch basins. So we'll actually be cameraing and looking at the integrity of the pipe underneath the road to make sure that it's clean, something that's going to last for a period of time. So if we have to go in and sleeve the pipe, that's the best time to do it, is when they excavate it, you know, we can go in and put a sleeve in.
Good point.
Okay, thank you.
And any other questions? Paul, you'll be happy to know that the work currently, you see some work down by Charlie Brown's, and we're getting ready for our sidewalks, but between Benway and Ronnie, all the pipe, the old pipe that they dug up, it's finding its way to the yard and will be salvaged so that we don't bump that cost.
By way of background, Warrshood Management Committee, we had our annual inspection and walk of drainage projects, and I was, I guess, a little vocal about the fact that there was really heavy metal that could be turned into dollars by the sidewalk project. And I said to Jeff, not jokingly, "What's going to be done with those pipes?" And so thank you for following through on that.
So, there you go. He's listening. He's listening, so it's perfect.
I said they're pretty heavy, basically.
Where's some cash?
Where's some cash? Okay, so we'll do a resolution Friday. We'll get it in, we'll have it on the Jennifer Monday, or excuse me, for next Wednesday. That'll be great. While I'm going to steal 30 seconds, just as more of an FYI, why these three guys are here in case you have any questions. Mother Nature, as you can see, has raised a little havoc. We were going to try to get Jackson Road completed by today. In a perfect world, that didn't work out. I think right now, you're slated to do that a week from tomorrow.
Well, we're hoping tomorrow morning. I need a five-hour window.
Okay, so if not tomorrow morning, a week from tomorrow. So, and then the other piece that Bob will be concentrating on will be Barrett Road, and he needs basically 24 hours from the last rain before he can complete that piece, and that's...
Depending on the amount of rain and the type of day you have after it. If you have a cloud-covered day and only mid-60s, that's not going to do it. I'll need a 48-hour window for that. If I get a nice 80-degree day and sunshine, 24 hours, I can be back on it.
Monday.
It's a, the cold in place is a very permeable deal. And because they didn't go all the way through the road base, you have a solid surface under there that's going to trap the moisture, so it has to come up to the top. It can't soak through and come into the base, so that's why we need the 24-hour window.
It's already in better condition than it was before, so...
True.
All right. So guys, thank you, appreciate it. We'll let you guys, I know it may not necessarily help, but we'll let you guys start to get a jump on your beauty rest.
We need all... Oh, yeah, I was going to say, I don't know if there's enough of that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ronnie.
Yeah, thank you.
Bob, thanks, appreciate it. Keep up the great work.
Thanks for turning in those pipes.
Yeah.
Pipes for cash.
Pipes for cash. All right. Why don't we continue right down, we're on Public Works, let's finish up Public Works. And Jeff, why don't you talk about the review of the sidewalk bids?
All right, well, we advertised for bids. They were mailed out to some contractors. It was also publicly advertised in the town newspaper. And I learned from Amy today that it's also, these bids are also posted on our website. So there's plenty of opportunities for people to see it. Unfortunately, we only received two bids. One from Heinz Construction Concrete, and then one from Ironwood Heavy Highway. Their prices, Heinz was the apparent low bidder, $44 a running foot for sidewalks. Ironwood was $51. We reviewed the Monroe County contracts, and on them, their price was $37 a foot. That is currently controlled by Sunshine Concrete. Well, we used to use them in the past, and they did the ones in Panera Metrol where one of their employees drove their...
Is it still an ongoing issue?
It is.
It is.
Still an open...
All right, so we had some discussions with the apparent low bidder and questioned, you know, what their costs, why their costs were as high. Their concern, here's a list of, the preliminary list of sidewalk projects. Their concern was they're working on a number of state highways, and they thought that the cost of maintenance protection of traffic was going to be a little higher than a standard sidewalk project. So we told them that to compare apples to apples, that they should take out that additional cost for maintenance protection of traffic because if it's required, and in many cases it doesn't have to be, that it would be an added cost whether we took the county low bid or their bids. So doing so that they will be able to match the $37 price from the county bids. So our options are to either rebid this process, the sidewalk construction with a clarification that maintenance protection of traffic is not included. You can accept the modified bid or use the Monroe County bids.
What was the modified bid?
That they would match $37, the county's, the current county bid price.
Did you speak with the other bidder?
Good question.
About modified?
No, I didn't because I just dealt with the apparent low bidder, but I can follow through with them as well. And just so you know, I was talking to Amy today. There was a FOIL request for the bids. It came from the Reed Construction Data News. They're an agency that operates the RS means, it's a cost estimating booklet. They're just tracking project costs nationally, so... But they did FOIL the bid prices, and at this point, we've not responded to that request.
Okay. I think Rob brings up a good point, Jeff, that, you know, I think we have an obligation to go back, to go back to both. Obviously, you went back to Heinz to go back to Ironwood and, you know, ask those same questions. The other thing I'd like you to do is maybe pick up the phone tomorrow and just touch down with Horowitz and make sure that, you know, he's had an opportunity to kind of follow that discussion process that you had with Heinz and with Ironwood potentially as well.
I will do that.
Okay. So let's do this. You know, certainly, if we don't take action on this until our first meeting in July, which is the second, are we still within the period of time of which the bids are still good, Jeff?
Yes, from the day we opened, they opened them on May 15th, so you typically have 45 days, so we'll be just at that.
Okay. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to dot those i's and cross those t's just to make sure that everything is on the up and up. And then, you know, we'd be prepared to do a resolution on the second, provided that, one, Horowitz is comfortable, and, two, you know, one or both matches the county bid.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right, terrific. Let's jump back, and we'll go to Bayside Flooring. Thank you, Jeff.
We had our meeting.
I can see that, dude.
Ah, didn't we?
We're on Bayside Flooring?
We had our meeting, we got a public hearing for Bayside Flooring.
Oh, sorry. Okay, got it.
We had our meeting for Bayside Flooring.
You're able to dual task, Kaz, you impress me.
And...
North is always on the top.
Not necessarily, you'd be surprised. Anyway, for Bayside Flooring, we had the public hearing. I haven't had any comments from anybody since that point in time. They are proposing to open up a flooring operation for showroom, that type of thing. The property has always been utilized, actually started out being utilized as a trucking corporation. It was a core trucking company. It's been used for that for a long time. The use is permitted, it would be a condition of permitted activity within the district. My feeling is that I would like to see something in the resolution, if you're so inclined to approve it, to ensure that they start doing some things to the exterior of the property for landscaping. It basically was just a paved-over parcel. It's almost like 90%, paved over, so for some brush and stuff that should be cut down and trimmed up. They are asking for a sign permit to put a sign out on Empire Boulevard. I'm under the impression that that sign is most probably within the right of way. We haven't been able to verify yet, but I am working with the state to do that. They would have to apply to the state for a permit, just as Blake Miller did for his sign. I don't think the sign that he's proposing would create any type of sight-distance issues or anything of that nature. But they're only asking for that sign on the street. They haven't asked for anything on the building at this point in time. If they do, certainly I would send that to you for review and approval. Other than that, there's nothing outstanding other than, right now, it's just been utilized as a store housing, a warehousing facility for what they did. And talking to them, they didn't even know that they had to come to a public hearing for an approval. They finally came to see me, and we had to explain what the processes were. They've been in there for a year doing something that nobody knew they were there, so...
Okay. Thoughts? Are you okay?
I agree with you, you know, especially in our showroom, they should fix up around there. It's not going to just be a warehouse. It's going to be some...
I think if nothing else, they should provide us with some type of a multi-phase landscaping plan for the property just to make it look a little nicer.
Yeah, it definitely needs some work. There's no question about it, and as we continue to redevelop... There's, there's no question about it and as we continue to redevelop that whole area along Empire Boulevard, this is yet another potential step.
That's right.
You know, for us to move in that direction, so, you know, a little bit of facelift of the building with, you know, some paint goes a long way, some landscaping goes a long way, you know, clean up some of that, that, what I'll call that scruff, you know, trees and, and other, other bushes that have grown up, you know, get that, get that cleaned up.
Should be a little bit careful because the east side of their property actually falls within a wetland area, so we're going to have to give them some guidance as to what we can...
Around the building.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
All right.
I'll prepare a resolution for your review.
Okay.
Get the comments back to me and we'll, we'll just move on.
All right, very good. Now, the second public hearing we had was on the special water improvement district that, this is the one that just continues to just blow my mind, the water authority's position, but that is what it is.
I'm for it. Wouldn't you argue?
Is there, is there an option?
We certainly don't want to be responsible for maintaining any...
We move, we move forward and again, all costs are borne by those that are responsible minus dual bugs.
Yep.
Okay, and so you do a resolution for next week as well?
Yep.
And then the last item under Action Ends is the Amish property at 1454 Fort Nine Mile Point Road. We've talked about this before, this is where the Amish family are looking to sell everything on the east side and have that taken over by, and there is an individual that's looking to potentially purchase that and they have the interest on the west side to donate that to the, to the town in kind of memory of, you know, the Mr. Amish and the Amish family. And there's a portion of it, as we've spoken before, you know, that's got the creek running through it, it's got some, some, a little bit of wetlands and marshy areas, so, and the, from a tax standpoint, the tax impact lost by taking it off the rolls is a couple hundred dollars a year, so it's not, not a, a big, a big revenue loss to the, to the town. And I think, you know, from, from our, our conversation that Gemini Dick Horowitz had had is that, you know, it, it has the potential to tie into some other land to the north that is in fact wetlands that, but could act as some type of a passive park that could be in that area, that trails could be put in there and what have you, so.
What about maintenance costs? Would this go into sort of that field mow or...
It would, it would certainly, I mean, I would, I would take, I would take the recommendation from a guy like Zaretsky, but what they call the wander mow, like Sherwood Fields, it gets a wander mow, a third of it gets wander mowed every year, so over a course of a three-year period, it might get, might get cut on, you know, but yeah, really just keep it as a passive, passive open space.
It's, it's pretty forested, the majority of it is forested, so it would, it would make a nice trail situation for the neighborhood.
Jim, where exactly is this?
If you were to drive over to Penfield's, I'm sorry, over to Northrop Road.
Northrop Road.
Northrop Road and you see where Gary Smith's property is with the pond and the, it's immediately north of that.
Got it.
His area is lawn area and everything, north of that is forested.
And then south, and then, and it's south of Plank Road.
Yeah, that's right.
That's Allen Road is the top of the picture.
This is it on here, and then Northrop would be right about here.
All right. Okay. And speaking of North, of Allen Road, if you, if you haven't gone by there in a while, you'll see that Dave Woodward has cleaned that whole area up and looking to put that back into agricultural use and it is pretty, pretty amazing transformation if you haven't seen it. And then also, he's, he's also working the piece at Ben Barry's as well, if you haven't seen that, which I was...
Oh, they're cutting down trees.
Yeah, cleaning, cleaning it up, so it's Dave, Dave Woodward and he's looking to, to get that back farming as well.
Good.
So, okay to, for resolution for us to, to move forward, to accept, to accept that?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks, Cos.
Thank you.
I think that exhausts the, the agenda. Anything else that, that we need to, to get on the table before the next two weeks? Okay, seeing none and no other business to come before the board, we'll adjourn at 8:36 PM. Thank you.